Welcome, everybody. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Hi, welcome. On a Sunday afternoon, I'm happy to see a good crowd. Thank you very much for coming. It's an important topic with our council members being elected. We just drew numbers. We picked one, two, three, okay? So that's the order. We're going to be going on with questions, just so everybody understands. Each candidate will have an opening remarks in two minutes. Then after the opening remarks, the second, the first question actually will go to the second person, okay? The first question will go to the second person, and then we'll keep rotating through the system, and it should come out okay. All right? That's what I was told. We've worked on it. You know, we use both hands and our fingers, so it did work okay. This is a forum, not a debate. Maybe I should be talking to people here. Which means candidates cannot attack other candidates, but only speak to the issues and their plans, okay? If anyone confronts another candidate, okay, we will stop it, but number two, we'll also provide an opportunity to rebut whatever statement was made by the other individual, okay? So you're opening the door, you know, the door. But, opening statements, two minutes. Each question, we're giving them one and a half, and then we have an opportunity for closing statements. All right? That's the format. And with that, I think we can start. And Jim, would you like to do two-minute opening statement? We will hold up at 15 seconds short of your time. You can hold up that bag, right? Give us a red and hopefully you can see it.
If we're talking that way, how are we going to see it?
I have my comment, it's going to be over there. Okay? For the purposes of this opening statement, count as question number one. Fair enough. Thank you all for being here. My name's Jim Curtis. Many of you know that I've been going around door-to-door.
Put that.
Okay, thank you. I've been going around door-to-door and I've been talking to a lot of folks.
I don't think they still hear you. I don't think it's on. Is it on, Dee?
It's loud on the ceiling.
Shall I just speak louder?
Turn off the volume.
There's no switch on the side. There might be something to twist on the bottom, but it doesn't work for me. Well, let me just, let me just speak up then, and as I have been talking to folks, I've been struck by all the things that we share, that we have in common. Our appreciation of the natural beauty surrounding us, our choice to live in what I consider to be a rather unique mountain community that is Sky Valley. In contrast, of course, the living in glory, seclusion in the mountains. So, we've chosen, we've chosen the community.
Jim, do me a favor. Yeah, I'm, I'm starting timers over again. Jim, do me one other favor then. Would you mind standing up while you speak?
Yeah.
Is that okay? You've got notes.
I've got, I've actually got some prepared notes.
Okay, go ahead.
I have to use this to keep myself under control. But the reason I talk about community, I mentioned everything that we held in common by virtue of our community, is that I have also been impressed with the collective dissatisfaction with the splitting that we've experienced into local political factions, and also with your desire that we return to civility among ourselves, to cooperation and reasoning together We need to be working together without making mountains out of mold hills that leave lingering suspicion of our city government. Local government is the closest that there's ever going to be to being able. Is this better? Okay. Cool. And our government is closer to us than, than most governments. Wow, this is great, I can even hear it. Anyway, by virtue of being so close to our local government, this is, this is the government that is most likely to hear us and respond to us, and where we count as individuals. I'm heartened by these sentiments in our community, and I pledge to you an openness and an open-mindedness in the city council. A willingness to talk and discuss issues civilly, base decisions on facts, and to maintain Sky Valley to prosper on into the future.
Good afternoon. Good af- can you hear me now? Good afternoon. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Chip Durpo. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve taxpayers of Sky Valley. I believe a council member should be a leader who is present, takes the time to research each issue in front of them, and be involved with other council members, and attend all council meetings. My decision to run for office in 2016 was based on my deeply rooted appreciation for Sky Valley. After attending several council meetings, I had concerns with the operation and the direction our city was going, such as the reduction in the police force, violations in our city purchasing policy, and the beginning of an over-the-top tree order, which made, all of which made my decision to run an easy decision. Since being elected, I've worked hard to ensure our beautiful mountain views can be maintained and enjoyed for many years to come. I brought transparency and taxpayer access to city meetings by spearheading the video recordings of all city meetings now accessible on the city's website. I've exposed purchasing policies, including purchasing stacking, which is a method used to avoid following our city purchasing policies. I'm extremely proud to announce today that after many days and hours of negotiating splot, Raven County and the six cities within the county have reached a fair and equitable splot agreement that all have agreed to sign. As for now, we move forward for SDS, Service Delivery Strategy. I assure you, I will work equally hard to eliminate the double taxation Sky Valley taxpayers endure today. Just this week, Councilor Al Boinkowski and I attended a pleasant and successful open meeting at the Raven County Board of Commissioners and the city of Clayton at the Dillard House, and we left very encouraged.
I bet mouth can get pretty close. Thank you to the Community Bible Church for letting us use this sanctuary for this forum, and also the Sky Valley Property Owners Association, and all our interested citizens who are in attendance. And thank you, God, that we live in the United States of America and can vote the way our hearts lead us without repression. The primary responsibility of the mayor and council is to handle the business of Sky Valley. Sky Valley is designated by the Georgia Municipal Association as a certified city of ethics. These are the ethics principles and pledges to conduct its affairs accordingly. Serve others, not ourselves. Use resources with efficiency and economy. Treat all people fairly. Use the power of our position for the well-being of our constituents. Create an environment of honesty, openness, and integrity. With that comes the city's core values. Open government. Responsive government. Listening to our citizens, being responsive to their needs. Service to our citizens. We have an obligation to ensure that the city services are delivered. Community partnerships by encouraging partnerships with the Sky Valley Property Owners Association, Garden Club, Community Bible Church, Chapel of Sky Valley, and the Sky Valley Golf Club. City staff, they are an important resource. Quality of life. Adapting to changing economies and demographics. Sky Valley's prosperity, excuse me, is founded in its residential neighborhoods, and protecting and enhancing them is paramount in all decisions. Safeguarding the city's financial as well as...
All right, this next question will begin with Jim. What is your opinion of the visitor center? Do you think we get adequate value from it? And if not, do you have any suggestions as to how it should be used?
Thank you for that. I, I do have some qualms with the visitor center, but I do think that it can be very positive in a couple of ways. I had a very good conversation with someone who works there part-time, and asked him, said, "I want a little role-play here," and I said, "Please tell me exactly if I'm coming in. Tell me where you are sending me. What is it you're going to sell me on?" And of course, the first thing was the waterfalls and, and we have in Sky Valley, of course, the beauty and the golf course of Sky Valley. But from there on out, we talked about restaurants, places to dine, events such as going out to the zip line tours. You know, I think it can be a very positive entity out there, but at the same time, I served on the Fort Myers Beach Chamber of Commerce, and we sold signage and advertising opportunities there, and that can be a cost-neutral facility if run properly. But I think we also must have a comprehensive plan to sell people. We really, when we bring a family into the town, we're probably in the middle of town here, what exactly are we asking them to do once they arrive? And that's my question for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, your name? Connie? Okay. Tourism and Development Authority in Raven County is essential. It would be a mistake to close the welcome center. This is the first contact people have coming up the road to Highlands and have with Sky Valley. Right now, we have two entities renting from the city. Patty Calrung Store, that shows we have some talent in artists, and a teacher for people who never painted before or doing beautiful work. Art is a form of therapy for many people. I do not see this closing the visitor center as a savings of citizens' taxpayers' money. We will now have an interruption of the business of the renters that we have to come in and find out information. And if and when the renovations begin, we will then be using taxpayer money for the project. The city hall and our post office was built with volunteer labor. The volunteers in Sky Valley were a lot younger then.
I think the decision to open a visitor center was a good one. We've been working on a marketing campaign to spread the awareness of Sky Valley. By making people aware of Sky Valley, getting them into Sky Valley, we're sowing the seeds for the folks that are going to be buying our houses in the future. Intercepting people after we have marketed their access to Sky Valley in such a way that we can make sure they don't miss the turn in the road to get to Sky Valley, I think is a wise decision. The visitor center has all the information about our local brokers. So, the only way I see that we're going to raise property values in the way they are, the way other places have recovered, is to increase the demand for houses in Sky Valley, condominiums in Sky Valley. We have a lot of folks who move away from Sky Valley eventually because of illness. They need to set up someplace else near medical care, they need to pay for medical care. We need to be able to sell our houses. They need to be able to meet the financial obligations in their, in their new places. So, talking about property values isn't, isn't a cynical appeal to voters. It's, it can be a necessity for folks in our age group. So, if the visitor center isn't working exactly the way we want it to, we can tweak that. Sorry. No, it gives you 15 seconds. Just like we can tweak just about anything in the marketing plan to get better results. So, that's, that's, that's the visitor center. Thank you.
Oh, Jim? Guess so.
Connie?
Yes?
Next question. What is your opinion of the park improvements made in the last year? What, if any, would you do to enhance the park?
Well, I think the trail, the walking trail is a little bit too rough on some people's feet. I like the pavilion. I like the way it's set up. I like it has restrooms, and I'm hearing more and more about pickleball. I have a new grandson that is taking pickleball in PE. So, the pickleball courts are growing. Every time I go down there, I see people on the pickleball courts. And I think we can, yeah, I think it's a really, really good idea, and I don't know, I'm not qualified to improve it. Thank you.
I think the opening the park, developing the park, was one of the, one of the big improvements that I've seen in recent years in Sky Valley. Of course, opening the club, that was probably the biggest. But in terms of looking towards the future and having things for people of different ages to do, I think the idea of a city park stands clearly among the things that we would expect our cities to do. The only quibbles I have with it was that I think we were, we were a bit conservative. We were trying to, trying to save costs when we put in the trail. I would, I would prefer to see a first-class trail made out of recycled rubber products like the one that we have down at Tululegore. It's a pleasure to walk on. I think the pavilion serves a real need, because we have so many people in Sky Valley that don't belong to the club and no longer have access or feel comfortable going to what we used to call the old property owners' pavilion behind the club that we lost in the, in the, in the bankruptcy. When Deb's children, my children, come to Sky Valley, they play pickleball. I've played pickleball a couple of times. It's a great game. I had to give up tennis. It's something I can do now. That's awesome. I encourage everybody to give it a try.
Thank you. I, like both of my opponents here, I agree that the walking path is an issue. I don't know how many times I have to pass that to go home, and in fact, I know Connie does as well, and I can't tell you how many times I see people walking on the asphalt down the side of the road rather than the walking path. There are other options to, you know, correct that. I was glad to also see that this council put together the tables and grills and so forth, and enhanced the pavilion at this point. We don't have a lot of room for expansion over there, so I don't know what else can be done at this point. But I am glad to see that the pickleball courts get used, and I think that's a good thing.
Jim, we're to you. What is your opinion of the Sky Valley three-way and two-way marketing programs with the POA and the club? What would you suggest to improve these marketing programs?
I think the marketing program is probably the most important thing that the city's doing right now. We all agree we're going to get great water. Garbage is, well, we've been, we've been living with it. But one of the things that we need to do, that we can't do for ourselves, that our realtors can't do for us, is market Sky Valley. And right now, we've got it funded in part by the Property Owners Association, an equal amount by the city, and probably about a half-share by the, by the club, because there's, there's restrictions on public money being spent on promoting a private club. Frankly, there's only two things that can get property values up in Sky Valley, and one of them depends on the Federal Reserve and our budget tiers in Washington. But this is the one thing that we can do, and I think we need to pay more attention to the effectiveness, see if we can't show people some, some measurable results, if we can even collect the anecdotal data. But I do know that every business school in the country has a marketing department, and that a famous study, which I haven't read, tells us that the great corporations that continued marketing during the depressions tended to be the corporations that survived the Great Depression. So, yes, marketing. Thank you.
In regards to the three-way marketing committee, I go back to the same thing. In other words, I'm, I'm a business entrepreneur. I have to have a product to sell. I'm not opposed to the three-way marketing. I just want to make sure that we understand and we know what our product is. We've got to have a product to sell. A lot of people ask me, because I, you know, I sit at the intersection of people who want to sell homes and the intersection of people who want to buy homes. The people who want to sell them wonder why their houses can't move, and why we just don't have enough attraction here. And some of that is a hard answer to come up with. At the same time, I've got buyers coming in here wanting to know where other amenities are. So, you know, that's a difficult answer, so we, we need to definitely do that. One of the first things we need to do, and this has been discussed in the three-way marketing committee, and that is to improve our signage to direct people to find Sky Valley. I know that back in, I believe it was February, that we actually directed our city manager to work on getting the signage at the bottom of the hill at the traffic light multiplied by four times in its size, and we just have not had that done. So, we've got to have a plan for the future.
I think one of the answers that people are trying to give, what I've heard before, is to have a downtown development authority instead of having the tourism and development authority working for us. I don't see how, as taxpayers, we could pay for it. The money that we're all putting in to go to the tourism and development authority is a big, big, it's just, it's much bigger than what we could do to get it marketed. We don't have the staff or the manpower to pay for one. That would raise your taxes. And if you want to go on and check and see how much they're doing for us, go to exploreraven.com. I am really in favor of staying with the Tourism and Development Authority in Raven County.
All right, this next one will start with you. What is your opinion of security in Sky Valley, and what do you feel is the appropriate level of staffing of the Sky Valley Police Department?
Well, when I, originally was elected, and I know, you know, I'm all for, I want to put our police department back together. We actually do need the officers, I think. As much, you know, people look at it and say, "Well, do we have a security issue?" Well, presently, we're very lucky. We do not have a security issue. We don't have a thieving problem and so forth going on. But we do have an elderly community. We do need people looked after. We do need to have the availability of them to be on staff. You know, it's unfortunate that we don't have, we've got a chief of police who doesn't even have time, because he has to pull a full patrol shift, he can't do his own job. And we need to make sure that we've changed that. I know in this particular budget, and another thing is attracting police officers, it's been very difficult, because, two things. One, salary. So, we have increased the salary in this upcoming budget by 11% for our current officers, and we are moving our newly hired officers to $19 an hour, based on working with other local police departments and what they are doing to attract their officers. So, anyway, I think we do need to improve that.
I personally like having police officers around full-time. My understanding is that the residents of Sky Valley want 24/7 protection. There are so many big and small things they do for us. Like if somebody falls down, you can call them and they come up. You don't have to call 911, which brings in, you know, first responders and ambulances. They also, when we do call 911, they throw down the orange flags that will direct the first responders to our homes and the ambulance to our home to get us, to protect, get us the needs we need. We are presently having a problem recruiting police officer, and our chief of police, Vaughn Estes, Officer David Edwards, and Ron Baum, are working overtime to provide this service. We need more police officers, and we will have more full-time. Chief Vaughn agreed to patrol our roads. The chief of police does not have to be a full-time position sitting in the office, but he does need time to fill out his reports.
I think our police department is one of the unique features about Sky Valley that separates us from all the other mountain resort communities in the, in this area. I think it is part of the product here at Sky Valley that we, that we do have to sell, just like we're the only place in the mountains and the forests built in codes. So, the likelihood of your homes falling apart because of shoddy construction is probably less here in Sky Valley than anywhere else. I think that Sky Valley has in fact attracted people here, because they, you know, all of us who've lived in the big cities have second thoughts about buying homes in the remote Georgia mountains, but the, but the police department gives us security. I've advocated raising the pay of our starting officers and our professional officers, because that's the way labor markets work. I think my basic approach to problems is analytical. First thing we do is we fill the one vacancy that we've, that we've been trying to fill. And then, with three officers and one chief, I think we can look at two options. One, do we want to do anything at all? Two, do we want to hire another officer? And three, is there some combination of overtime and the police chief's participation that would allow us to cost-effectively save the, save the cost of paying for retirement and insurance benefits for that fourth officer? I don't care which one it is. I'm willing to pay for it either way, but we ought to check and see which is, which is cost-effective.
Thank you, Jim. Connie? I think we're going back to your direction.
Okay.
Okay. Sky Valley and Raven County do not currently have a services delivery strategy. What do you feel is the best approach for working in the county to resolve this issue so that Sky Valley will qualify for grants in the future?
Ooh, I got the big one, didn't I, first? Okay. Service delivery strategy. With an agreement between Sky Valley and Raven County, we will be able to pick up the grants for our city. And Raven County has offered to pay Sky Valley one mil of our taxes to help with the Sky Valley Scaly Mountain Fire Department. That would be almost $60,000 a year. They have agreed to that so far, which is the amount we need to send to the fire department per year. The county also just bought another large piece of equipment for our fire department. We are waiting on a judge to have the time to mediate this issue. A meeting was scheduled September 17th, but the judge needed to postpone. If we don't mediate, we will need to go before a judge to get this resolved. This is an issue that is real critical to Sky Valley and other cities. And I would like to understand why the city of Clayton, who hired some SDS consultants, is letting us in on it. According to what I've been told, they are not wanting us to help pay for the consultants.
Raven County's been losing about $400,000 a year in grant money. We've been losing $20,000 to $30,000 in grant money. This is a serious issue. If I were on the city council, this would be the most immediate issue that I would be addressing. And make no mistake about it, we can't negotiate with the city of Clayton. Every municipality has to negotiate their own deal directly with the county, and that should be our goal. Our biggest issue is fire and rescue. I think that issue is just about resolved. It should be resolved. The county's offered to basically pay for it. Our other significant, and I'm not sure how significant it is, but the tipping fees, we pay money for the county, the county provides guard these services, but when the city of Sky Valley, with our own equipment collects the garbage and takes it to the county, they charge us commercial tipping fees. Well, I understand their argument, but I think they have wiggle room in this. Other than that, I think those are our issues. And I think that our negotiators should not be stressing our relationship with Raven County. They should not be adopting the extreme positions that we have heard of SDS consultants. And Sky Valley should not be the stumbling block. We should let Clayton take full responsibility if there is no SDS.
Well, one of the, I've been very involved, Council Wheeler and I have been heading that up, and I, of course, have been very involved with that. I think one of the misconceptions I'm hearing right now from both of my opponents is that Sky Valley does not have a seat at the table when it comes to SDS. In order to have a seat at the table to even negotiate SDS, you must have a county, a city population greater than 500. So, we are, there's only two, by the way, in the city of Raven County, and that is Mountain City and the city of Clayton. So, you ask why we are working with Clayton. Clayton has graciously offered us their services and to join with them with their consultants as well. But they've also offered us a backseat, which is the only way that, I mean, Sky Valley gets any say-so, and that's SDS. So, don't think that we have any control over or through Raven County. We had a fantastic meeting the other night, and I do think that on the, there has been no offer to pick up the $60,000 fee. Now, there has been open negotiation verbally, and I do believe they have indicated, or at least come across, giving some idea they will accept that. We talked to them about roads. Actually, I don't think a lot of people understand, Ball Mountain Road is a county road. When a county road crosses through a city limit, it now becomes a city problem. So, they just didn't agree to that one. There are several little things that I can talk about, but it seems like I am out of time. So, ask me later about SDS, if you want to know about it.
All right, Jim.
Chip referred to Connie and myself as having some misconceptions. Would you like for us to respond to that?
I think he gave a statement on the facts, as he saw the facts. Let's leave that for the police, if we may.
If you'd like to follow up on that, if you could, in email or whatever you're concerned about.
Well, if you have closing remarks, give them a chance to include it if you want, sure.
Okay.
All right. Jim, we're back to you.
Okay.
Different views on community matters always exist. They're not a bad thing. What should the council's approach be to handling those differences?
Well, I'm not going to talk about all differences. I'm going to talk about how we handle the issues that come before the council. Of course, we're going to have disagreements. I think one of the reasons that we have been fractured in the past is because we have not been as civil as I believe that we need to be in public discourse. I think civility is probably the first among civic virtues. We listen to one, we should be listening to one another respectfully. We should be making decisions based on the facts. We should make sure that nothing we say or do in our deliberations is going to make it tougher for us to sit down and discuss later.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, will you re-ask the question, sir?
That's long.
Differing views on community matters always exist. They're not a bad thing. What should the council's approach be to handling those differences?
Well, I can tell you, from serving this last two, well, I guess 22 months now, so anyway, yes, from serving that time, one thing is, is having full information. We need our city staff to be clear in providing us information. There are many times that we have needed information, and we have gotten it last minute, and they've had information in city hall that we have not been given. We need transparency. If we work, you know, any problem can be worked out if everybody has 100% of the information available to make a wise decision. But when you don't have that, it's very difficult to work on the rumor mill to come back, even though we are working for the city, we don't have that information. We're getting that taken care of. That's one of my biggest things. And of course, you know, I like to poll the city. I want to hear what people have to say. I mean, work for the taxpayers. I'll ask you your opinion. People don't like it when I send out a questionnaire, but the point is, that's the only way I know to get the opinion of a majority of our taxpayers. And I want to hear from you, and that's the best way to do it. I want to represent you. I may have a differing opinion, but I represent you.
Just put the flag up.
He's got 15 seconds.
Okay, I'm using up my time being cute. But at any rate, I think we all need to be given, like Chip said, all the information we need. Even if I'm out of town, I can be reached by phone, or I can be reached by email, unless I'm at 12,000 feet or 10,000 feet. That doesn't work up there. But I think we all need to know what's going on in the city, so we can all make the best decision that we feel like we need to make for the city of Sky Valley.
Chip, I think we're back to you. Yes, sir. What do you feel should be the priorities for Sky Valley for the coming year?
Well, priorities for Sky Valley in the coming year? One of the things I, you know, I deal with more in business than I do some of the other parts of the Sky Valley, at least I have in the whole time I've served on the council. I think we need to make sure that our accounting system and our depreciation schedules are up to date. I think it's very important that we come in and reevaluate all of our equipment, put useful lifespans on them, and depreciate them properly, so that we're not digging into the general operating fund to replace a piece of equipment. Depreciation's been overlooked, and we don't have. You know, building, redoing the police department, as I say, we've already allocated the funds for next year to bring in additional police officers. I think that's extremely important. I think it's extremely important we develop a comprehensive land plan. People say, well, it means this or it means that. It doesn't mean anything in particular, but it does mean what the city taxpayers do want. And we can propose a number of different everything, from a downtown development to anything else. So, whatever the taxpayers want. But we do have a developer who owns close to 600 acres here, and if we don't have a comprehensive land plan, he can sell that property, you might end up with a trailer park next door to you.
Well, I have a vision for Sky Valley. I don't want to see another suburb of Atlanta, or even Highlands. The ambiance in Sky Valley upon first visit is nature-filled environment with access to hiking, golf. When I meet visitors in Sky Valley, where are they, the tailors? I tell them about the fun, caring atmosphere we have for each other in time of need. My vision is for our property values to go up, new homes being built, more homes being sold, not reduced prices. I'd like to see us all get along. I would like to see our roads improve greatly, our ditches improve greatly. We've got a major problem there, and of course, we've got the police situation in hand right now.
What should the priorities be for the city of Sky Valley? Number one, we need an SDS agreement so that we can get our grant money. Number two, we need to work on maintenance. It's true what Chip said, we've got to have a product here to sell when people get to Sky Valley. Part of our product is the overlook. The overlook has barriers that are falling down. We're proposing to put up a very inexpensive $5,000, $9,000 fence there. I think we ought to be putting up, that's our very front door, that's the first contact people make with Sky Valley, and we ought to have something akin to the overlooks on Blue Ridge Parkway. Second major public area we need to work on is down in the waterfall area. The guardrails down there are rotted and falling down. First impressions are last impressions. The next thing we need to do with the waterfall area is put in four or five steps down from that park, that concrete park, that asphalt parking area, so that people don't have trouble, especially folks getting to be my age, have trouble getting down to the waterfall and to the walking path. So, that's maintenance. And finally, we need to get a hand on the marketing program. This is how we're going to raise property values, if they can be raised. Rats. Well, we'll get back to the marketing question and property values another time.
You'll have the chance shortly. Connie, we're going to begin with you, closing statements. You'll have two minutes.
Oh, I thought I just had one and a half. It's like a babylon. Well, I pledge to passionately promote our city in a positive manner, support our Sky Valley City Police Department, serve all the citizens in Sky Valley, show our city employees respect and not micromanage them, work with all the cities in Clayton and Raven County, give women a voice and respect they deserve, support the Raven County Tourism Development Authority. And I want to say thank you to the moderator and the committee for the thought-provoking questions. And Fall Fest needs about 10 volunteers for next Saturday. City of Sky Valley requests October 11th from Ella. You can see that email and go to that website or whatever it is called. And volunteer.
Connie, I'd like to pledge something too, and I'd like to pledge myself to that code of ethics that you read earlier. I think it was in your opening statement. If I am elected to the council, I will bring what I plan to be an analytical approach to our problem solving. I'll be reaching out to fellow council members to discuss ideas and doing it with respect and civility. Cost efficiency, I'm an economist, cost efficiency is my middle name. We'll seek out the efficiencies where we can find them. The fact is, we're a very small city. We're not going to be able to have the staff to do everything the way that we're accustomed to having seen it in larger cities. But we will find our efficiencies, and we will hone the procedures for informing, for the care and feeding of the city council. I believe in marketing Sky Valley to help people find us. This is probably the most important task confronting us. We may be small, we have a small budget, but you know what? We only need a tiny increment of our market share among the kind of folks who want to experience the mountain living lifestyle that we offer here. So, I think that's within the realm of possibility. And before I finish up, I just want to thank the moderators for the questions, the CBC for hosting this event, my fellow candidates for being here, and the Property Owners Association for shepherding this event along. But finally, as we address the needs of the present, we should look toward the possibilities of the future, rather than looking back to the disappointments of the past. So, forward we go. Thank you.
Well, if re-elected, I hope to do exactly what I was saying there. I'd like to see us continue to work on the police department, work on our comprehensive plans, and our maintenance department. I agree that we definitely have a maintenance issue, which we actually did vote to address. We addressed, according to you, James, two extra employees full-time now, instead of only half the year. Once we did that, got it in place, it was very successful, and we were moving forward until we lost Jared, who took a broken ankle, and then another one terminated. It was, well, he terminated himself, and we need to get another. So, hopefully, we'll get that back up and running. I'd like to say in the last election, the voters sent a clear message, and as a result, our current council has been working diligently to answer the call and has made a lot of progress. Help us keep moving the city forward, improving these services with responsible spending and attention to your tax dollars. I hope by now, some, if not all of you, have seen my website and use it to keep track of the issues that are important to Sky Valley taxpayers. I give a voice and the power back to the taxpayer where it should be. I have an open-door policy. If you have questions or concerns, call me directly, please. I'll work for you. And hope you will re-elect me, Chip Gerpo, to the Sky Valley City Council. Thank you very much for hosting this, and thanks to the CDC as well.
Hold on to, if you wouldn't mind. Obviously, I want to thank the candidates for all your thoughts in taking the time to come here today and working out your schedules so we could all get together and have this opportunity. The Property Owners Association tried to bring information to the community. I hope this was beneficial. I want to thank Dan for working with me on coming up with questions, and there's actually one other person, Steve Mason, who started a lot of this, but something about a brother in Panama City affected his life, so he's not here today, and for that, you know, we miss him, however. We moved on, so we appreciate it. Thanks to the CDC, all of you that have helped us with use of the facility and technology. I really appreciate that. It's given us a good forum, and thank you to the city for videotaping this and for everybody's information. If you know somebody that missed it, it's going to be posted on your website, correct, at the city. So, we have that too. I think, what's that?